Stockbridge Planning Board to order. Thank you all for participating and signing in and being part of this. We welcome your comments, everybody's comments, not just from the board.
Jennifer have to be here? I'm sorry, does Jennifer have to take notes?
Did we talk about this last night?
I, I don't know. It just dawned on me when you said this is a open, you know, you're opening the meeting. Do we have somebody?
I think, I think we excused her on the grounds that, and maybe I shouldn't have been so rash, on the grounds that this would be straightforward and it would just be, you know, the minutes could just reflect the fact that Jeff presented and we questioned. I'm not sure we have to elaborate on every single line item that is discussed.
Is it recorded?
It is recorded.
Okay.
Steve, Steve Borns is from CTSB is with us. So it will be available on the website eventually and on the CTSB website.
Thank you.
So let us.
That because this was supposed to be a workshop, not a meeting, there was more flexibility. But now that we've called it order as a meeting, I'm not exactly for sure.
Well, I think, I think since we've got a quorum of the planning board here, it has to be a meeting. And I've described the, the, the purpose of the meeting as a workshop. Don't you agree Christine, if there are five of us from the planning board, I don't think we have any alternative but to call it a meeting.
It's a public meeting that we had to do that. But I think that we're not planning to make any motions. As far as I know, this is just a discussion. So that gives us more flexibility than if it was a full fledged.
Right, I, that sounds right to me.
Okay.
And Steve is reminding us that we can take minutes from the recording.
If we. I think you do need to take minutes, Bill. It's, it's a public meeting, it was posted.
I think you're right. I think you're right. I think we may not have to be religious about this and, and you know, copy down every single comment from every single person. But I get it, we should have minutes. So with that, Jeff, again, welcome. Thanks for joining us again so quickly after last night. We've all seen the draft of your bylaw. I still can't print it with comments. I can see it on the screen with comments, but I can't print the comments, which is annoying. It's not your fault. It's, there's something wrong with my printer or software or something. Anyway, I know you've got comments and I, I think unless you feel otherwise, Jeff, we should maybe start off from page one and kind of work our way through it. Again, I don't think we need a line by line synopsis. We'll be here all week if we do that. But people can interrupt with questions if you don't mind that approach, Jeff. Do you, is that okay?
No, that, that would be great.
Rather to hold them till the end, I think is impractical. And if we, if you skip over something that somebody feels needs, has a question on, we can go back to it. Does that make sense, everybody? Okay, with, with those sort of informal ground rules, Jeff, would you like to kick it off, please?
Sure. So this is draft number two. I had a, quite a preliminary draft where I still had lots of questions. And I think that got circulated around a week or two ago, but.
It did not get circulated around, Jeff. Can you send that to me?
Well, it was circulated around kind of by back channels, as I understand it and.
Right, but I didn't get it.
I, I, I sent it to the, I sent it to the subcommittee that I was working with at the time. And I believe it went to the planning board. I'm, I'm not sure where it went, but.
It did not go to the planning board and it just went to the subcommittee. And we've had some open meaning law clarification. So Bill, I, I would like to see that first draft.
Sure, we'll send around the first draft.
Okay, so, so Bill, you have that somewhere.
We do somewhere. I, I haven't looked at it for a while. And the reason it wasn't circulated, for what it's worth, and I realize that the subcommittee is no longer in existence was the, the, the subcommittee or the working group, whatever you want to call it, wanted to present to the planning board, not, not the subcommittee's ideas. This is all Jeff's work. But something that had a little more clarity to it and we, the subcommittee never made any decisions about deleting or what have you. Anyway, you're welcome to look at the first draft. We will distribute it and.
Thank you, Bill. And, and you know, and I got your email saying that, you know, you didn't want to overload volunteers on the planning board and so on. But I think from my standpoint, I would prefer that assumptions on, on what my workload should be, be put aside and I would prefer to make those decisions. So for me, you can assume that I'd like to receive everything.
Okay, Jeff, please.
Okay, so that draft was, was the predecessor to the one you have. I made some, some edits to it. So if you see the first draft, you'll see some little changes to the second draft. Based on some subcommittee comments and further, further thinking and refinement. So the two look a lot alike, but the second one is in a little better shape. So in a nutshell, what you have, the NHRPZ, the natural and historic resource preservation zoning bylaw is, is, is something that's been passed in quite a few communities around the Commonwealth. I've, I've shepherded six or seven of these through. And really, the, the goal, the goal here is to, is kind of switch away from conventional subdivision and make an open space subdivision, the, the required form of development. And if you could let me share a screen, I will, I will show you a couple of slides that just illustrate this quite well. Just so you get an overview of what this particular bylaw is trying to accomplish. And really this stands separate from a cottage era redevelopment bylaw. This is not that yet. And that can be added to this, incorporated into it or done as a separate bylaw. But so far, this NHRPZ doesn't have anything to do with those cottage era estates.
So. So please go ahead and share the screen.
Okay, here we go. All right, can everybody see that?
Yes.
That's a PowerPoint slide from the show that I gave you folks a while back, I guess. So this is a, well, there we go, hold on. This is a piece of property before, a little development up along the road, 100 acres, mostly in its natural state. If the town's zoning bylaws and subdivision regulations were applied, this is a reasonable subdivision to expect from a property like this. And you probably have properties in Stockbridge that, that might be similar to this. And then the, the NRPG alternative looks like this. So really, the aim of this bylaw is to go from conventional subdivision, which is, is pretty much the by right option in Stock, Stockbridge and require something like this.
What's the difference in the number of units?
Thirty-four here, 14 here. The way the town ended up passing this, the units here would have increased to 20. So there would have been more units added, but going 34 to this with six extra units in it. But about 75% of this piece of land preserved.
And, and Jeff, with that reduced number of units, how did the developer make money?
They sold the units and made money that way. Mostly what they didn't do was build all this road, which is a tremendous expense, because every one of these lots, except for the road front ones, had to have, I believe in that town, 200 or 300, I think 200, at least 200 feet of road frontage to create every one of these lots. So that's what subdivision does. You're, you're, you're not along the road where you have existing frontage. You have to create road frontage by creating a road. And that's very expensive.
So just in FYI, I, I think we covered this in January when you did this presentation.
Yeah, this is not the same audience though, Kate. And I think just a quick summary that I don't think, Jeff, you're planning to go through the whole.
No. No, no, not at all.
I think this, this is not a bad way to start off, just kind of setting the stage of the difference between what could be done under our current bylaw and what would be what that same property would look like if we adopted a bylaw like, like Jeff's.
Okay.
Jeff, how many acres were, were, would have been allowed for the original proposal? The house lots versus what the size of the house lots are in your, under your bylaw?
These house, these house lots here, depending, some of them, some of them extend across this wetland here. You know, are around two to four acres.
So that's what would be in Stockbridge with, under our present bylaw, we could have something like that.
And.
What you.
And, and these house lots are about an acre. There's another quick example. This is from Wendell. This is based on actual property. This would have been the conventional subdivision. I believe it was, I believe it turned out to be 18. I counted them up, 18. And then the NRPG alternative was 12. So it went from 18 down to 12. But the 12, again, on lots that, that were about an acre, went into a small portion of the property, leaving the balance, I think this is around 70, 75% preserved. So that's really what this bylaw is all about. Going from a conventional subdivision to an open space subdivision. So I don't need to share this anymore. Stop sharing. So Bill, how would you like me to proceed? Just, just put the bylaw up on the screen?
I assume we all have copies of it, but that's probably a good way to do it is share it on the screen.
Okay.
Hey Bill, I have a quick question. Jeff, what is the market price of the two units and examples you just gave? Are the two sets of units, order magnitude?
The, the, the market price? Oh my goodness.
I mean, were they, were they middle class housing? Were they luxury housing? Were they affordable housing?
They were probably middle housing for around here.
And so just the, I guess the one question I have, and I know nearly nothing about the real estate market is, is, um, you know, in Stockbridge recently, anyway, the market for, for especially new construction has been very much at the high end. And one question I want to, you know, pose now, maybe at the end is just where, you know, I mean, for example, the, in the, in the past couple of months of the, you know, two special permits that will come before my board, one has and one will, are easily four or $5 million projects. And this is, this is sort of the market in Stockbridge because we're right next to Tango and all the rest of it. And I guess I'm just wondering, you know, if you feel like a sort of one acre lot properties with shared backyards fit that model, because that's what the demand is, I think. Anyway, I, I mean, you have many people on the call are more versed in the real estate market locally than I am. I just would like to throw that out.
Yeah, I mean. Housing survey that we really need to do, that would give us that information.
There's, there's probably going to be no end to, to estate type houses, high end houses on large lots, because you can do that along the roadways.
Right.
Create those lots. And I'm sure that's where they're, I'm sure that's where they're being created now. And I would imagine they'd continue to be. This is what happens. This is the zoning that, that pertains to a subdivision. You have a piece of property that's not, that's not well developed just off of road frontage, but needs, in order to realize its potential, needs to have a road put in to develop more road frontage. And often you don't see that right away. You'll use up a lot of road frontage first. And then people will start subdividing. And what this NHRPZ bylaw does is get you ready for that. Even if that's not happening right this minute. History shows that it eventually does.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, for, for what it's worth, I did a study when I was in grad school. It was going to be my thesis, comparing a conventional subdivision to cluster subdivisions with open space. And I found market appreciation for the, for the clusters that had half the lot size, but lots of available open space out appreciated over a 20 year period, the conventional, where the lot sizes were doubled, but there was no open space. So I'm not sure if other studies have been done. I know I did that one out here in the Pioneer Valley in the Amherst area, where there's significant housing demand.
I mean, I think that's the trick, isn't it? A developer would, would go along with this on the basis that he, he can actually still make money building fewer houses and admittedly less road construction, which as you acknowledge is expensive as well as laying out electric grids and the like. But you know, a dramatic reduction in the number of units on the same piece of land does call into question, can I still make money? If I don't build, if I build only 14 instead of 24.
So.
If you look at the Partridge Berry Farm development, which was one of Randall's projects, one of the first ones in Ipswich. And you look out now 20 years, not only did the houses sell very fast, but the resale value is tremendous and they stay on the market for a very, very short period of time. And they've done a lot of work documenting that.
I'd like to make a comment, Jeff, that we actually have a model for this sort of cluster type subdivision in White, White Pines here in Stockbridge. And you can check that out on the GIS maps if you want. Have you seen that?
It, it would be an actual, actual project.
Yep, from 1984.
Oh, okay.
And I also am going to provide a different opinion from Bill's concern with the developers making money. My feeling is that Stockbridge, the, the look, feel, character of the town, I know Richard is concerned about the lack of diversity. And I think we should share Richard's email and I'm happy to pull that up, was not brought to where it is by concerning ourselves solely with how much money the developer made.
I didn't say that that was the only criterion. I don't, I didn't mean that and I didn't say it. I, I just comment on the fact that if you're making fewer of the same thing, actually, they're not even the same thing. They're on smaller lots, they're smaller houses, than you could under a standard subdivision. You have to do the math and I'm not voting one way or the other at this point. I'm just saying that that's, that's the kind of calculation that any owner or developer needs to make when he does this.
Well, Bill, when, when we're thinking about this, if we have this bylaw in place, if people need to sell their land, you know, they're going to sell it. They're going to have to sell it to somebody that will buy it. If a developer can make money on this kind of development, that would be much better than a subdivision in the old school. But if a person has to sell his land, that land is going to be sold and something's going to happen to it. If we have a bylaw in place that saves and conserves a lot of that land, that's what we're looking for.
I, I agree.
I mean, somebody's going to sell it, somebody's going to buy it. And the person that buys it is going to do something with it. So let's make it a good thing.
I think we really need to move on and look at what is in this bylaw, because we've already spent 23 minutes and haven't really looked at any of the language that we need to move forward on. We, we're going to be able to debate whether or not to adopt this for a long time. But let's really look at what we're potentially going to adopt.
I, I think it would be good to share Richard's email since he's written to the board. So Bill, if, if it's okay with you, I'm going to share that.
I, I don't think we should do that, Kate. That's, I don't, I think as Christine just said, we haven't even read word one yet of the, of the bylaw. I, I've shared the, Richard's email with the, or yeah, email with the whole board. I think it's an important email that needs to be discussed, but not now. I'm sorry.
Okay, but can you post it on the, you know, on the town with the documents with the, on the town website?
I'm not sure we want to be posting every single.
About that, let's look at what is in front of us, because we only have until six o'clock unless you want to go to 6:24. But we have spent since years trying to get a bylaw for the town to review. So let's have a discussion on the bylaw. And then we can talk about all of these other agenda to chill issues as time allows. But let's start working by having Jeff put up the first section and have a specific discussion on those provisions and then move through all of these pages, because we have an awful lot of information to get through and we don't have much time.
Jeff, what, what is the first important area you'd like to focus on in your, in your draft?
The beginning.
Again, I, we, we do not have time to go line by line. But so I'm asking you to be, be discreet about key, key elements unless somebody has a question.
Okay, I have some comments here from Patrick White that, that were sent on to me. And I've looked at them and I've thought about them and I will try to address some of them as we go. But if I can share a screen again.
Okay. Bill, does Jeff have my comments?
Are, are you Patrick?
No, that's Richard. He's the one who wrote the email about affordable housing.
I don't think so.
No, I haven't forwarded it to, to Jeff, but I will.
Okay. All right, so let me see, put you guys down there. So we're up at the top, everybody up at the top?
Yep.
So this replaces, I guess, adds section 6.6. I guess this replaces 6.24 in your current zoning bylaw, which is a, a short subdivision option section.
Right.
That's where it goes. And it's 6.6. And let's see. So these purposes here, I, I took mostly from what was in Lyden. I added a little, I think a little historic angle here. Because the idea is that, that if you folks do a cottage era type bylaw that's specific to that type of redevelopment, it would come in under this, under this bylaw, because there would be an open space, a significant open space requirement for any cottage era redevelopment. So cottage era redevelopment would be a form of development under this. So I've put that in. I also, and I'm not sure I did the right thing here. I, I put in a paragraph from Joel. This second paragraph here is mostly Joel. I'm not sure if it really belongs here or not.
So Jeff, Jeff, are we talking about the purposes now or have you already moved on?
No, we're, we're in the second paragraph of purposes.
Okay.
So anyway, I, I did get, I did get a comment from Patrick about enhancement of the town's property tax base. He, he felt that property tax base was quite sufficient and significant. I'm not sure what the point was, maybe not necessarily mention this here, but you, maybe Patrick can address that. Right, housing, employment opportunity for area residents, yes, property tax base.
Look, I, I think that zoning, my personal opinion is zoning bylaws should deal with zoning and not with social engineering. When we start talking about employment and about property tax base, those are sort of out of the wheelhouse of a zoning bylaw. But that's, this, those are the, that is the least important comment of all the comments I made. I will, I, and I honestly don't that much care whether we leave in the purpose as enhancing property tax. We all like our taxes to go down, so I think it's fine.
I, I would agree with that. And then I would also add, Jeff, that the whole Randall Aaron's presentation, the whole focus was on, on density neutral zoning. And I think there should be something in there. I think that word should be used, the focus on density neutrality.
Okay, well, this is not density neutral. By design, not density neutral. It's density negative.
Please explain.
Probably from any given piece of property, you will get less units.
Okay, then, then that's great. Then say density negative. I think it should be in there.
Well, I don't like that idea. If anything, density neutral is as far as I want to go. I don't want to see it get more restrictive. I think we're, we're well along the way to being restrictive in Stockbridge as we are. I would like to see density neutral at its best.
Okay, well, the problem with density neutral for this type of bylaw is there are so many advantages in here in terms of ease, ease of permitting, promptness and predictability, formulas instead of, instead of mystery to, to guide the developer, infrastructure savings, design flexibility, things like that, that if you have it be density neutral, as one town in Massachusetts did, and now regret, it will be a development bonanza, all beneficial to developers. And we'll leave the town wondering why it ever passed such a bylaw. So we, we've not had good luck with density neutral NRPGs.
What was that town, Jeff?
I don't want to say, because it's, I'm, I'm, I'm not going to say it's out east of here.
Everything's east. Yeah, most of, most of, everywhere is east of us.
I just want to say that I, I understand what you're saying by density negative. And I think that everybody would appreciate that. And even Wayne, you would, if you, if you understood what he's talking about. He's talking about it can be density, density negative, because there are fewer roads and otherwise ways of saving money that a developer would appreciate. But, but I just wanted to say something else. We have two developments in town now. One is on Stonehill Road. I don't know if you're familiar with them. And they were, they were on maybe 80 or 100 acres with not much road frontage. There's only about 350 feet of road frontage. So the road goes, is one road goes down and there are 11 houses. And then in the other one is Campion Farms, you all know about, which also was developed because there wasn't enough road frontage. And it's a mixture of, of 11 houses and some open space conservation. So, but they all have quite a few acres, like at least four acres. Now, is that the kind of thing we could think about when we're having this bylaw? I mean, it doesn't have to be clustered. It could be more acres and still have open space, right?
If, well.
How do you determine? How do you determine whether or not you're going to have a subdivision if you don't have enough road frontage? I mean, how do you determine whether you can have a subdivision without enough road frontage? Is that a special, you know?
The, the, the property has to be such that a, a, a new road can be built through it. Whether it's a cul-de-sac, you know, one that goes out and ends or some type of loop that goes out and comes back or, you know, like a lollipop that goes out, it divides and goes around and then it comes back.
That's what those two subdivisions are, what you just said.
Right. So, so what they've done there is they've, they didn't have the frontage on the road, so they created it with those roads, those blue roads. And that's pretty much what you have to do. Once you, um, your road frontage in town starts being used up or you get complicated parcels that are large in area but don't have a lot of frontage.
Right, I understand that, but I'm just wondering, when are you allowed to do that, build a road? And when do people say, well, you have, you have 40 acres here, but you only have 350, therefore you can only build one house? When would that be said?
A, a, a landowner can apply for a subdivision at, at any time. Subdivision is by right. Sorry, folks, I have somebody knocking at my door here. I just have to, what happens when you work from home? I gotta just answer it quickly.
Julie, I also think that you, we're not taking away a developer's ability to develop a conventional subdivision like the two that we have. This is just an option for people who wish to do a design that really creates smaller lots because in a lot of communities, as people are aging, they're finding that they don't want two or three acres of land.
So you're saying that this would, would just be an option decided by whom? They?
There's, we'll get further into that in the bylaw, but the developer would come in and meet with the planning board as their first step and the other boards and commissions. And then they would work through whether they can do this kind of a development on the property or if they would bet, you know, if they're really wanting to do a conventional zoning bylaw project, they can do that. But there are people, and so there's a market for houses on smaller lots. It's sort of like, you know, there are people in Stockbridge who are on beautiful two and three acre lots. And then there are people who want to buy downtown.
No, I understand. I understand all that. I was just, I didn't know that there was going to be an option.
I believe that's the way.
So maybe Jeff's, is that true? There will be an option with this bylaw that will allow a develop, a developer to have a, a conventional subdivision or, or a choice of the, of this type of subdivision?
Okay.
Option?
Okay, um, as it stands, um, these bylaws are all written to be the zoning for a subdivision. So if you plan to subdivide, which means build a new road and divide up land into house lots, then this is the zoning that, that applies to that type of proposal. So you have to do this.
There won't be a choice, in other words.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Right, it's, it's mandatory, except up here. It, it says, um, it says all subdivisions within the R2 and R4 zoning district shall comply with the NRP provisions of this section. And here's, here, here's the option part, unless the planning board allows a development that deviates from the requirements herein by special permit. So in
I see, yeah.
In theory, someone could propose a conventional subdivision. It, it would be difficult to get because, um, uh, it, it, they would have to demonstrate that it meets the, um, the purposes of this as, as well as of NHRPZ, which is a difficult challenge. But what's more useful in this waiver provision is that, that, you know, not all parcels are created equal. Not all zoning can foresee every circumstance that might come before it. So this allows a little wiggle room for creativity, um, for, for bending these regulations a little bit if it's, um, if it would result in, in a better design.
And as an example of that, excuse me, Jeff, as an example of that would be the Stone Hill development because of the topography. They've built along the face of that hill. And to do a proposed development that you show in, in this design, I believe would be very difficult to do. So having that flexibility might work out for us in the long run.
Yeah, 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 this is a little, um, this is a little bit of flexibility that's, um, that's built in. And it's flexibility that can be used if it makes sense, if it's in the town's interest to do it. If it would result in a better project, uh, meet the purposes as well, uh, then the planning board can consider a waiver.
Jeff, could you explain density neutral and density negative? Excuse me.
Okay. Density neutral is what cluster zoning is and it is what OSRD is. OSRD, which is, is what Randall, um, uh, plugs is, um, uh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I, 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 I live on a horse farm and my help is out there knocking on the door, so I have to, uh, I have to see what's going on. I'll be right back.
Basically, OSRD is usually always density neutral, which means you get the same number of units that you would with a conventional zoning proposal. So if you could develop 40 lots conventionally, you could do 40 lots with OSRD. Jeff's bylaw, his proposal would be negative, which means that you would not necessarily get the 40 lots that you might anticipate. You would get, I don't know how many, it depends on the property, but you would get a few less lots. So that's why it's not neutral, it's negative. Does that help?
Yeah, cluster and OSRD are, are really based on the underlying zoning. So in theory, whatever you can get under the underlying zoning, and often in rural Massachusetts towns, that's an awful lot, um, you're guaranteed that in a, in a cluster. And what you do is just compress that same number of, of house lots into a smaller area and preserve as much as you can that's left over. What NRPZ is, is it is the zoning for a subdivision. It's its own zoning and, um, and there is no underlying zoning left over. So even if this goes in the R4 or the R2 districts, um, as far as the zoning for a subdivision, R4 and R2 don't have any meaning any longer. It's the formulas in here that determine the number of units and they're, they're a little further down here.
So question, Jeff, um, if you're still on this section, so why, why wouldn't it apply then to the, uh, to the R1 and RC districts?
It could, it could. So far, looking at your map, usually towns, think about bylaws like this for their outlying areas first. And your R4 and your R2 appear to be that, but it could also be adapted for the other zones as well, if that's what you wish. The numbers would be different. The percentages of open space would be different. Density divisors would be different. And we'd have to work through that.
Jeff, I have a question. Why, why did the density neutral version of this promote a building bonanza?
Excuse me?
Why, you said before that when a density neutral version of this plan was used in the other town, that it, it, it promoted a bunch of building. Why is that?
I, I need to share a screen again, okay? And in order to show you.
Just don't name the town.
I won't name the town. All right. Let me try to.
It's east of here.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm not having any luck getting back onto the main, the main screen here. Which is a pain. Let me put this down. New share, okay.
The one reason why it might create a bonanza, Wayne, is because you can build more houses with less infrastructure.
Okay. All right, can everyone see this? Landowner acceptance of low-density NRPZ?
No. Can you maybe describe it in words?
Okay, it's a slide from the slideshow. And, uh, these are the advantages to, um, landowners, um, from low-density NRPZ. So this is why these bylaws have passed by significant majorities, including landowners in towns that, and when they realize that they're going to, it's going to be lower density, it's not density neutral. A, a number of reasons, prompt and predictable permitting. It's by right and it's by formula. There, there's not a lot of guesswork. Greater design flexibility. There's no lot area frontage or setback requirement. And no frontage means you don't have to create 200 to 300 feet of, of roadway for every house, and that's key. Housing diversity. All the underlying housing types are allowed. That's if you wish. Attractive features, lower infrastructure cost, shared driveways, density bonuses, transfer of development rights. These are all things that developers love to work with. An owner may retain the resource land. In fact, a, a, a landowner can keep all of the resource land, uh, for agriculture, for forestry, um, or just, um, just for their home. So all these advantages exist and they offset the density negativity of, of these bylaws. And that's, that's why they're accepted by landowners. If you, if you have density neutrality, then you get all these benefits and you still get to build the same number of houses. And in this particular town, um, the developers have blocked, have blocked to that. So in, in my opinion, it hasn't worked there.
Isn't that controlled by the, the amount of land that you put in a CR?
It is. Um, the, the amount of open space is. But all the other factors here, um, make building those same number of houses much more profitable. So that's why these things are all, uh, are all density negative. And the more housed, frankly, the more houses you have, especially on water and sewer, the more land you're going to need for those houses and the less is going to be available for open space. All these formulas have to balance out so that if you preserve a certain high percentage of, of open space and have a fairly limited area to put the housing on, um, there, there, there can't be that many houses because basically you need about an acre for a four-bedroom house with a well and septic system. You have to have that.
But don't you buy your design, isn't it inherent that if you allow the same number of houses that you'd still be saving a tremendous amount of open space?
Cluster and OSRD do preserve open space, um, generally not as much as NRPZ. They're generally better subdivisions. I think they have some amenities to them, but if, if you want to preserve serious amounts of open space, we're talking up to 80%, then you probably need to cut the units. Especially if you don't have water and sewer everywhere.
Go on, Jeff.
There we go. We're back. All right, so now, let's see, are you guys still looking at the, um, at the bylaw?
Yes.
To share it back out. Can you pull it back up, Jeff?
Hold on, there's too much stuff up here. Now I don't have the bylaw anymore. What's going on?
Um, so, did you stop your share? You had to stop the share that you were in previously and then reopen what, the bylaw? I guess you did.
There we go. Phew, okay, we're back.
Yep.
Purposes, applicability. In, in the applicability part, um, there, there've been some talk of, of what the threshold for having the supply to be. And, um, I had heard that 80 acres had been previously, um, recommended, but that it was large. So for right now, I stuck in 20 acres. So that would mean that subdivisions on less than 20 acres would not have to comply with this. You can lower that down if you want, or you can lift that up. But that's, uh, anything in yellow here is something that might still need some discussion. 20 acres again. There is an option here for non-subdivision applications. So it says if subdivision approval is not required, um, new, new roadway not proposed, the applicant can nevertheless apply for an NHRPZ on a plot of land of at least 20 acres. And that is by special permit. And the planning board, um, needs to make a determination that the conservation benefits versus detriments of the permitting. This article, yeah. So the, the, um, the planning board, uh, can consider a special permit for an NHRPZ, uh, that's not a subdivision, something that comes off of a shared driveway, um, or something that even derives its frontage from the road. So this is, um, this is just an option because not everything is a subdivision.
And how many, I'm sorry, how many lots in town or 20 acres or greater?
We've got that somewhere.
If, if you're asking me, I don't know.
We've got that information. I'll pull it up.
Can you send it to me, Christine? I don't want to interrupt the meeting, but I would be curious to see it.
Um, Jeff, I have a question about in, back to section two. So where it says, subject to the requirements of the section and the subdivision rules and regulations, does that reference, um, the rules and regulate, I mean, does that, that references subdivision law, bylaw, right?
It's the subdivision regulation. Right, that, that you have in your town.
Okay.
And, and that is probably, th- there's a piece of this that would be added to those regulations. It's the conservation, um, analysis and findings. That would, that would go in, in your subdivision regulations. It's a couple pages that describe how that goes.
But Jeff.
And that would be the, based on the input of a conservation, a scientist?
It, it would be however, however you write it. We haven't gone over that piece yet, but that's a couple of pages that would go in your subdivision regulations. And that, that describes the process and it's like Randall's And that, that describes the process and it's like Randall's four step process that you might've heard about. Where the whole parcel is analyzed in terms of what resources are on it, what merits protection, where the best locations for houses and house lots are and wells and septic. And, um, kind of divides, divides the piece up so houses can be intelligently located and the best resources are preserved.
Okay. Have you, and you've, you've looked at our subdivision bylaw?
I haven't yet.
Okay. Cause there's a, there is a list of criteria in that bylaw, which I've just been, you know, reviewing. We haven't had a subdivision since I joined the board in, um, 2012. But there is a list of criteria in there.
Probably that criteria doesn't, it, it's not similar to what would be in a conservation analysis and findings. It's, I, I'm, I'm sure there's lots of criteria about roadway standards, drainage, um, monumentation. Everything, everything that would go into a subdivision.
I mean, does it address things like fragmentation and permeable surfaces? The importance of, of some of these approaches in terms of conservation?
Fragmentation of, of open space, yes. Not necessarily impermeable surfaces because that, that would occur in the, in the developable area.
Okay. Well, I think that that's important. That was one concern I had about Randall's presentation was just, it looked like the amount of impermeable surface was larger than I was comfortable with.
Overall, this, overall, the, the NHRPZ should be less because they're less impervious because there are less houses, um, and less roadway and less driveway on, on a given piece of property. So it should be less.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So I'm just kind of moving down through here. And I, I don't want to re-present this. I just want to, for the most part, answer any questions that people have.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
So, so the exemption part here. This just says that A and R lots or existing lots are not subject to this. You know, lots along roadways are not part of this and pre-existing lots are not a part of this. New lots and subdivisions. Conservation analysis and findings part. This just describes how, how this goes. And, and it says where it goes in your subdivision regulations. And it's in yellow because I have to get the correct citation for that.
Yeah, I couldn't find that online. I did look for it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll find it and put that in there.
Oh, that might give us a hint of the town. No.
Is that a state regulation?
No, no, actually what this is, is, um, remember this came from the Leyden bylaw. So this is, this is where it appears in the Leyden subdivision regulations.
Yeah.
So I just haven't changed it yet because I haven't gotten the, the correct citation for you folks. So, so this will be changed to be the right citation for the Stockbridge subdivision regulations.
So in the 17th, 2014, in the section above it may also be changed, correct? Depending on what we want to put in there?
Yes. No, I'll, I'll, I'll get all the, I'll get all the citations correct. It's not really important that I do it right, right for a second. So, um, this, um, this talks about a, a meeting between the planning board and the applicant to discuss the project. It, it recommends such a meeting.
What about a butters? What about a butters?
Under the, um, under the subdivision regulations, all the butters get notices of projects like this, just like any other subdivision. And it would be a butters and a butters to a butters within 300 feet. So all the normal notice would, would take place and that would take place for any type of subdivision, conventional or one of these.
I mean, I think that those notices, notices.
It's maybe with special permit.
So I think that one thing I liked about Joel's draft was that he really made this kind of community oriented in that he pulled, pulled the butters in from the get-go.
I guess the question is at what stage do a butters get involved? Should they be tromping around the property with the owner and the planning board? In this not required, but encouraged meeting that kind of looks at the, at the, at the relevant space? Or does that come later when, you know, a butters are notified that there's a, that there's a plan?
Yeah. You, you, you can't put in a mandatory meeting ahead of an application for a subdivision. It's just, you just lawfully can't do that. That was actually the, um, the Wall Street case that said you can't throw anything up in front of subdivision. So a meeting like that would, would not be a, a legal, you couldn't do that legally. You could do it if this whole thing was a special permit. But then it would have to be an optional special permit. Cause I don't think you could require a special permit for every subdivision. No, you can't. It, it, it's kind of a, it's kind of a circular no win, no win kind of, kind of thing. So it's in here as encouraging to meet with the planning board. And that's about as far as you can go. And smart developers do that anyway.
So, but then what's the timeframe from the standpoint of a butters?
Uh, it, it's, it's all according to state law. When a butters need to be notified.
Well, I'll just make the comment that it seems like a, um, you know, for such potentially consequential projects, it seems like an awfully tight timeframe.
What do you mean? What, what's tight about it?
Well, first, what exactly is the, the timeframe for, for state law Jeff with a project like this?
Oh, I'm trying to remember what it is for subdivision. Preliminary plan, uh, planning board has 45 days to look at a preliminary plan. But a preliminary plan is, is fairly meaningless. That's often when, uh, developers and planning boards discuss things when they submit a preliminary plan. And there is no, is no, no notice requirements to a butters for a preliminary plan. So under the subdivision control law, and remember it could be a conventional subdivision or it could be an NHRPZ subdivision. There's no requirement that a butters be involved at the preliminary plan stage. When a subsequent definitive plan comes in, that's when all of the butters have to be notified. And there's a public hearing and, um, you butters have to be notified of the public hearing. And the public hearing notice is posted in town hall and in the newspapers.
And is that the same as it is for any regular special permit? Like the 90 days or whatever?
Yeah, um, subdivision, subdivision, if, if you have a preliminary plan, you get 45 days there. And then if it's followed by a definitive, you get 90 more for the definitive. If you come right in with a definitive and skip the preliminary, which you can do, then it's 135 days. So it's 135 days either way. So that's 135 days for the, the planning board to, um, advertise, hold a public hearing and make a decision.
And with the approval of the applicant, you can usually extend those hearings if their progress is being made, correct?
Yeah, I, I don't know a single, single major project that doesn't, that hasn't been extended. Generally the hearings go on for quite a while.
Is there any possibility to include wording? Um, I mean, this is a board that has, um, over the years, you know, operated pretty much off, out of public view. The pandemic has changed that. But is there any, given that this is, seems to be directed towards the planning board only, is there possible to have wording that, um, requires, um, you know, uh, public, public meetings, um, over Zoom or just requires, you know, meetings that are covered by, uh, by, um, our local cable TV or, or, you know, and posted that way?
I think those would have to be rules and regulations of, of the planning board. I, I would imagine much to my chagrin that as soon as this COVID is mellowed out, boards are gonna go back to meeting in person. Most of the ones I deal with, uh, don't like this format.
I think, but I believe in Stockbridge anyway, they'll still be on Zoom. Uh, there's efforts underway to ensure that. So we may meet in public like the select board does, but, uh, but the ability for folks to watch them in real time or after the fact in Zoom is gonna continue, I hope anyway.
Well, it would be, it would be a, a great, a, a great augmentation to a normal meeting.
Yes.
That way.
Jeff, I have a, a more, a general question. I just want to, um, say, uh, this, most of the samples that you and Randall give are for properties of about 100 acres or less. And, uh, in our situation, I don't know if you're familiar with our Desisto property that is sort of the instigator of this bylaw is 320 acres and maybe 200 would be buildable. So it's a much bigger kind of property. Would there be, in that case, what would it look like? Would it look like Daly City or would there be multiple clusters or, or what? And especially if you wanted to say, if you wanted to have an open space of say 90% or 88, either maybe a scenario of 80% or 90%, what would that look like?
Well, I'll tell you what, if, if you folks can get me some basic information about the Desisto property, I, I can run that, I can run that property through the formulas and pretty much answer that question.
Okay.
I think you have it, Jeff. Did the plan you have come from, from Joel?
I have, so I have a flyer that was put out by the developers that chose the property.
There's a, I'm sorry Jeff, there's a March 18th draft of the overlay of what the cottage despair state bylaw under Joel's plan would look like. He did that. That's, I don't know if that's a place to start or, or if you want to do what you're proposing. But he did do one.
So Joel, so Jeff, so Joel had, um, at one point when the planning board was trying to understand how the formula would work, um, Joel said, hey, why don't we just look at the, the Sisto? And at that point, um, Terry Flynn, who was on the select board then, had arranged, made arrangements for the town to send, um, plans to Joel. So he has some plans. I assume he still has them unless he returned them to the town.
So you, did you ever get any results from that number?
He presented them at the planning board meeting, but I don't, you know, I don't remember what it was. I think Jennifer has a, probably has a tape of it, but I just don't.
Well, I have a copy of what he, what he developed off of that.
Yeah, but I think Wayne, what Julie is asking for is what the actual numbers would look like.
Okay. Well, he has numbers here, but they probably don't calculate at 80 or 90% open.
Okay. Um, how, how many acres is the Sisto?
320, I think.
Okay.
320, but some of it isn't buildable because there's a wetlands going through it and there's a steep slope.
That's fine. Uh, let me ask.
And there's. It's in two different zones, I think as well. Is that right?
Yes. Three and four, uh, two and four.
R2 and R4. Okay. So that, huh, that complicates it a little bit because you have to use two different formulas. Anybody know about what percentage is, is wet? For how many, how many acres is wet?
As much as I want to talk about that project because I think that is what started this whole discussion, right? And I think that's why we need to keep it a separate bylaw. But if, if we're working on something separate of cottage estate today, I'm sure if we get you that information, it would be much more clear to you how you would evaluate it. I, I'm just saying that we're started down this road of this non-cottage estate idea. And if we're gonna think about keep, keeping them separate, maybe we keep them separate and continue on with what we're talking about today for something other than cottage estate.
I agree because we're running out of time here.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. If, if you want, if you want me to do an analysis on some property, any property in Stockbridge, I can, I just need the basic information that goes into the formulas. And I can crank out some numbers for you.
I think, uh, Jeff, that brochure that we sent you, that the developer produced.
Yeah.
Has, I believe may have the details you need to do that analysis.
Okay.
He actually says how many units of various types he wants to build and he shows where he wants to build them.
Yeah. I mean, this, this Desisto project here with all these types of, um, of townhouses and, um, different facilities would not necessarily be possible under, under this.
I, I get that. Um, I, I think, uh, the, the question then is what would be possible?
Yeah.
Under this new bylaw.
Less.
And how much less? I mean, that's, that's the analysis.
Okay. Yeah, it, it, it's just a difference between, you know, sort of a residential subdivision, which is what you see most, mostly in, in towns such as Stockbridge, you know, single family houses. And a, a complicated multi, multi-use, um, type project like the system. So, um, the numbers that I could crank out based on this for that particular property would probably be just single family dwellings.
Well, if that's, if that's what your model produces, that's what we'd be interested in seeing, I think.
Okay.
And, and we realize that this is an unusual, or was an unusual proposal. It included a hotel, a restaurant, um, different types of housing. So it's, it's not a cookie cutter kind of deal.
Yeah. So if you just imagine there was no estate there and no interest in any kind of a development like 37 interlock and, and it would just be a residential type project. That's what I could get for you.
It would be worth looking at.
Okay.
And then, um, Jeff, in section three up above, you mentioned findings, um, conservation findings?
Yeah.
Can you send an example of what those ideally look like?
Of what conservation findings look like?
Yeah.
Okay, that is, um, that is something that is, is produced by the planning board after an applicant, um, submits a conservation analysis. So that sort of a, a two-phase part. The applicant, um, performs an analysis on the property and submits it to the planning board. And that analysis in, in the end will direct where the housing goes and where the open space is. Configuration. And the conservation findings are the planning board's response to the applicant's analysis. And the conservation findings are the planning board's response to the applicant's analysis. And it, it can either be, you know, we agree with their analysis in all respects. We, we reject the analysis. It's, um, it's, um, it's way off base or we agree with most of it, but we're going to tweak it a little bit. And our findings are going to be slightly different. And whatever the conservation findings are of the planning board, that's binding upon the applicant.
Jeff, you said in your, you said in multiple places in your document that the planning board does this in conjunction with historic, historic commission, historic preservation, I think we called it Stockbridge, and/or with conservation commission, you know, basically the other groups involved in these sorts of decisions. What happens in other towns if there's a disagreement between, let's say, the conservation commission's reaction and the planning boards? Is it simply that the planning board decides? Or is it that both boards have to agree to accept the findings?
Well, this, the subdivision, subdivision approval or a special permit is, is the responsibility of the planning board. So in the end, after consultation with conservation commission, select board, historic commission, historical commission, whichever you have, after that consultation, ultimately it's up to the planning board because this, this is the planning board's permit.
Okay.
It has to be somebody's permit.
Well, it could be, it could be multiple groups permit. I mean, one way to ensure there's consensus in the town would be to require, you know, if it's about tearing down or retaining or retaining a historic property, you know, you could easily write it so that both historical, historic preservation and the planning board had to agree to the plan. That's a way to force consensus in a way that doesn't create preeminence. And I say this from the perspective of someone who currently has this responsibility as the selectman. I am not suggesting anywhere in my notes or in, or right now verbally, that the select board should retain that preeminence. But I, I certainly would be a lot more comfortable giving it up if, you know, if all the boards in town were sort of forced to play nice together to come up with a consensus path forward.
I think that's a formula for deadlock.
Yeah, maybe, but it's also, it forces consensus on projects. You know, I'm not saying it's the right idea. I just figured it's something on my mind.
Now, what is required is consultation. It's not the planning board acting in isolation. I think the consultation has to be real and meaningful, but not necessarily forcing agreement on all, all these other bodies.
But, but Bill, you know how it works right now. You know, conservation tip a few ways in first. They say they give it a thumbs up, then you guys weigh in, you give it a thumbs up, and then in many instances, it seems like it goes to special permits to the select board, and then we give it a thumbs up. And that often, in fact, most of the time works. It's, you know, but it is the requirement of the current process that, my guess is if you give one of these projects a thumbs down, it never gets to us or something doesn't get approved by us. I'm just saying that, you know, that
I mean.
It's all to be on the same page.
I, I suppose, I mean, there's nothing, Jeff, that requires that this be done in, in the way you've drafted it. We could, we could require either consensus, which is not necessarily unanimity on every point, or approval of each of these bodies.
I think it's a formula for deadlock.
I'm just saying, I mean, those are the alternatives.
Put this on our list to explore and keep going through the provisions because we're not going to decide this right now.
Yeah, you, you also have to be aware of state law, which
Right.
In terms of a subdivision, the planning board is the only approving body for a subdivision.
Okay, that's good to know.
According to state law, in, and in, in the special permit section of, of, of the zoning act, there needs to be what's called a special permit granting authority, SPGA. And that doesn't have to be a planning board. It could be a zoning board, could be a select board, I believe. But it does not contemplate multiple SPGAs. It contemplates one. So.
So Jeff.
Before I lose my train of thought here, possibly there could be some mutual consensus required at certain points in here. But if, but if, if that mutual consensus holds up the granting of a special permit, that may run afoul of state law. I'd have to think about that. Because in the end, in the end, one authority is supposed to be able to decide whether you get a special permit or whether your subdivision is approved.
So a quick question, Jeff, how does the subdivision rules and regulations tie into this at this, in this section? I, I'm probably not asking the question correctly, but do you understand what I'm asking?
So let's see, which section are we on now? Conservation analysis and finding.
Number three. Right, number three, planning board and consultation.
I think Jeff is right. There needs to be one captain on every ship.
Um, Richard, I'd like to ask this question, please.
Go ahead.
These projects are all coming in, unless they're a special permit, unless somebody applies for a special permit, because it's not a subdivision. These projects are all coming in under your subdivision regulations. And, and this is simply the zoning that they have to go through, the zoning that applies to that subdivision. So as, as a part of, of, of this whole evaluation, during the planning board's evaluation of that subdivision, it must consult with the conservation commission, select board, and the historic commissions. It has to do that. That's part of its due diligence.
And many towns have subdivision regulations that accompany this that are, oh, fifty, sixty, seventy pages long. So you have a lot of opportunities in your subdivision regulations to develop the standards that you want in this analysis.
But then, I'm sorry, Christine, why aren't we doing those first? If you're saying that's how other towns do it to protect themselves, why aren't we doing those firsts?
Doing what first?
You know, editing, you've made the point that we've only got about twenty pages of subdivision regulations in place, which may not protect the town. And I just wonder why we don't do the part that protects the town first if we don't have them in place.
I think we need to determine what the subdivision regulations should apply to if we're going to adopt this new zoning.
Okay.
The subdivision regulations are, are really mostly having to do with building a new road. There are all of your road standards, road length, road width, road construction, drainage, improvements, underground utilities, all kinds of, of mundane stuff like that, that you've got to throw into a subdivision. That's mostly what those regulations deal with. And, and it's different from zoning. It's, it's much different from zoning. And what, what this does will, it will add the conservation analysis and findings part to the subdivision regulations. And that part is really not at all like what's in your subdivision regulations now. And it, it's specific to these types of projects where, where the natural resources of a piece of land need to be looked at, evaluated, and decisions have to be made about where to develop and where to conserve. So I, I, I think, I, I don't think you should worry too much about your subdivision regs. Because if, you know, if you look at them, they're going to be all about roads. And if you write a good conservation analysis finding section, that, that should serve fine for these kind of projects.
But that is based on stated criteria. Is that right?
The, the conservation analysis and findings?
Yeah.
Why don't, why don't the next time we meet, I, I get one of those up and show you guys what that looks like.
Thank you. I think that's what I was asking for. Thank you.
It's only a couple, it's only a couple pages.
Can we go, keep going?
You bet. Happy to. Okay. Minimum preserved open space. Most of the ones that I have done in towns that have zoning like yours, a, a lot of town center and a lot of open space around have gone for eighty. Some, I think Wendell did seventy-five. Joel and I wrote one of these for the Adirondacks where we did ninety because it's just different up there. Sometimes you see sixty. We have sixty and choose, we have sixty and eighty in Chutesberry. So this kind of mirrors Chutesberry. But for your low, low density outlying district, eighty percent seems like a good number to start with, good percentage. And for R two, which is a little less out there, sixty percent.
And why does it have to be so high?
The, the higher the percentage, the more open space you end up with.
Yeah, exactly. I'm, I'm trying to think of this from the perspective of an owner who wants to, again, I come back to this question of what's more attractive to an owner or developer is a few houses on big lots covering a large part of the property versus smaller houses on small lots and fewer of them on less of the property. I guess I'm, I'm just not getting how, how the economics work. I know you've said that houses have sold and they've sold well and they sell quickly. But eighty percent conservation seems, it just seems on the face of it, a very high percentage. I like the idea of lots of open space. Don't get me wrong. I'm just trying to think of how that squares with an owner's, you know, right to the, the appropriate use of his property.
Yeah. It is high and it's intentionally high. All the ones that I've worked on in past in Massachusetts have had eighty, except for one that had seventy-five as, as the highest. So, I mean, again, that's, that's a local political decision. And you folks end up deciding what that's going to be.
And Jeff, a question again on how it's calculated, isn't the eighty percent after the unbuildable is taken away from it?
No, that's the whole, of, of the whole piece, the whole project.
Okay.
And then the conservation analysis and findings sort of sorts out what's going to be conserved, what are the most valuable resources to conserve, and where might best the houses be located so as to work well with the conservation land.
You know, Bill, I, I just, I think that one of your goals also as a board should be to protect existing and neighborhood property values as well as the right for the individual owner to make a profit. I mean, the fact of the matter is that many of our houses in this town are worth double what they would be worth in many other parts of the county. And we need to be cognizant of the fact that, that the more density you put into one property, the more you might undermine the property values of the properties around that property. And so the not, the only consideration can't just be, how does the guy who owns the land make the most money? We've also got to be thinking about what the economics on the impact of the neighborhood and therefore the overall tax base of the town is going to be. Anyway, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I, I hear you.
I would also add that we need to be thinking about sustainability and conservation.
I would go back to what Marie said with a, a current owner of a property that needs to sell it. And, and by changing this to an eighty percent restriction, I, I think it, it undermines possibly what someone might receive for their property if they had to sell it.
Wayne, the traditional subdivisions remain in place. This is an additional option. It's not a restriction or a change.
But it takes eighty percent of your land and makes it unusable to an owner.
Not if you go for a traditional subdivision.
A choice. It's a choice, Wayne. They don't have to do this.
Oh, oh, wait a minute. Yes, they do.
Wait a minute, he's right. He explained that prior.
Yeah, the, the way it's written, this, these are the requirements for a subdivision unless they're waived. Up in that earlier paragraph, the, the planning board could entertain a waiver of that eighty percent by special permit and could reduce it in some circumstances. But if, if that waiver is not sought or it's not granted, then the eighty percent holds.
But you can't tell people that you can't build a house because it's going to be worth more than your house. That's not fair.
Is that, is that a question? I'm not sure. Is that a question?
Well, you know, if, if you're worried that the houses in the development are going to be worth more than the neighborhood houses, so wouldn't that in effect raise your property value if you're worried about these new houses being worth more than your house? But you can't tell somebody, you can't build a house next to me that's worth more than my house.
Well.
As you might worry was more that, that if you do too much density, that it would reduce the value of surrounding houses. Not that.
That it would, that it would reduce the value of your property if there's more houses next to you.
Acres near me, next door to me, if you built, and I know, I know you're not proposing this, but if you built thirty units on it, there were all density like, you know, six-story condos, you know, my property value would probably lower. That was the point I was making, is that, you know, it was a written response to how much you could conserve.
Well, I've got the property down near us too, that, that six acres at the Levon property. And if somebody came in and poured everything down and put condos up in there, you know, I can't say anything because that's what they want to do. It's their land. They can do. You know, if they're by right and they're zoned for it, they can do it. What am I going to say? Oh, no, I live next, I live two houses up and I don't want my property value to go down because you're going to put in a lot of little houses in there and it's going to reduce my property.
Have that right. We're saying that zoning is a townwide decision around what's best for the town, what's best for the character, what's best for the environment, as Kate was pointing out, and what's best for the tax base and what's best for the aggregate property values of the residents of this town. We're trying to make decisions that are in the best interest of the town, not the individual.
I get that. But then you get individuals who abut this three hundred acre who don't want anything to happen there because it's next to them. But if they, if the subdivision meets all the bylaws, ticks all the boxes, then just because somebody doesn't like it, doesn't mean that they have a say and that it's not going to happen.
Well, they do have a say.
Term, it might be poor planning is Patrick's point.
And it begs the question, to Kate's point, that the last development was two thousand and ten. What are we worried about? I mean, it's, it's not like people are banging the door down to do developments here.
Yeah.
And I wonder if what we have, I hate to say it this far down the line, but what are we improving by, and I know you're saying future, once the road frontage is used up, then people start to, to do different things. But it begs the question, if there's been one in the last eleven years, are we in danger?
Not until you get one and you don't have a bylaw like this in place. We just had a solar farm come into our town four years ago and we had no solar bylaw. And we had to do that off the, the, the seat of our pants through a special permit by, I, I won't, I won't describe how difficult it was, but we wished we had a bylaw in place. And we wasted no time in putting one in place after that first one. But anyway, in the interest of time, since it's five thirty-two, how about we zip down here a little bit? Might answer a few questions that I've been hearing about density and number of units and things like that, lot size. The, the, the next part is, is where allowable, so, so this is minimum. so, so this is minimum preserved open space. And then the next part is allowable residential units. And this really describes the formula to calculate how many units are gonna be in them, are gonna be allowed. And you do a net acreage calculation first. And what that involves is taking the whole project area and subtracting a number of, of categories of constrained land. Land with slopes. And again, these numbers can be set as you wish them to be set. It could be all of the land with slopes above fifteen percent. It could be a third, a half, whatever. All land subject easements and restrictions, all FEMA floodplains, all freshwater wetlands. So you, you calculate all that and then you, you divide all of, you, you subtract all that land from the total project area and you divide by the density divisors, whether it be six or four. And so essentially you take the whole parcel, you take away the constrained land and then you divide by either six or by four. And that gets you how many units are allowed in that particular area of the project, whether it's R two or R four. Most of these are all gonna be just one or the other.
So Jeff, just to clarify, the protected land is based on the overall parcel and the number of units is based on the buildable part, part.
Right. It's based on a, on a, subtracting the, the constrained, the unbuildable and then dividing by whatever density divisor you select. So if, if you look at my note over here on, on the right, this is where I try to explain all this stuff. Explaining that the six and the four are close to the range that, that I've seen in bylaws that I've passed, three point five to seven point five. In general, the higher the density divisor, the lower the number of units of housing. Density divisors here, six and four should reduce the unit counts for most properties in the R four and R two districts respectively. And, and that's essentially saying it is gonna be density negative. And then a couple of examples. For a hundred acre parcel in the R four, in the R four now, with no constrained land to subtract, eighty acres are preserved and sixteen housing units are located on twenty acres. The average lot size would be over an acre. And so remember, an acre is about the size of a football field. So you could have any kind of house you want on there. So hundred acres, eighty acres open space, twenty acres for development, sixteen housing units. That would be if on a, on an R four piece. For a hundred acres in the R two, with, again, with no constrained land, so you're not subtracting anything, sixty acres are preserved and twenty-five housing units are located on forty acres. Average lot size would be over one point three acres here. So a little less open space, more housing units here and slightly larger lot, lot sizes. So you're not going to find, you're not gonna find lots that are gonna be less than an acre in the R four and one point three in the R two. They're all, they're all gonna be fairly substantial lots.
And just to be clear, you're, because this I find, this was the part that I found the most surprising today. You're saying that this takes away the traditional path to subdivision that currently exists, which would be to take that hundred acres in R four and turn it into, you know, subtract the fifteen percent for utilities or whatever. And, and that would be about twenty-two units, twenty-one units as subdivision. You're saying that is no longer possible if we pass this bylaw without a special permit?
Without a waiver through special permit, you're correct.
Okay.
Well, it's density nu- negative.
Yeah. And, you know, these numbers could be, again, we can change the numbers to make it density neutral. But I, I would advise against that. I'll do it if you want, but I, I have this terrible experience with this other town to remind me why it's not a good idea to do that.
That was West Stockbridge, right?
West Stockbridge happens to be the first town I ever consulted for in nineteen eighty-eight.
It's the only town. And it's still beautiful.
Yeah. Bob Hatch. Does anybody still know Bob Hatch? He, he was the planning board chair at that time.
Bob Hatch?
Yeah. Bob Hatch.
Ah, good old Bob.
I know Bob Hatch.
I knew he'd get one.
He was a bit of a, he was a, the town, the town I'm thinking about is a, is a hot developed, developing town in the four ninety-five area. So anyway, the next section is density bonuses. And, you know, this is a fairly long section and it can be anything you want it to be. And it, all it, all it does is for things that are important to Stockbridge, you know, additional open space, affordable housing, public access to the, to the open space, anything that, that you feel you want to incentivize in these projects, you can do it through these density bonuses where the town, the developer gives the town something and the town gives the developer more units. That's the way that works. And there's a maximum of twenty-five percent increase, no matter how many density bonuses are given.
Jeff, how many of the applications you've seen requested density bonuses? And how successful are the applicants when they request them?
I, I haven't seen any that have requested them.
I, I was just asking.
Yep.
I haven't seen any yet.
Alright.
The next section is transfer development rights, normally a confusing bugaboo. But here, here it's pretty simple. It only is applicable to an NHRPZ. That's the only way you can transfer rights. And if, if you have a project that you're working on and you have a certain base number of units that you've calculated, you can have. And there is other land out there that you either own, control, or can make a, a deal with the owner for. You can acquire rights from other pieces of land, import those rights into your project, build them and then preserve the land where the rights came from. Which would be the descending parcel.
But in aggregate, the only, the maximum amount of expansion of the development is twenty-five percent between the density bonuses and the transfer development rights, the rights written.
Correct.
So in other words, you can't get a runaround, yeah, runaway project that could, you know, take twenty acres on the lake and turn it into five hundred acres of rights to build.
Exactly. And, and the TDRs here are, you know, they're, they're not particularly generous. Landowners seem to be interested in them and, but here, one way of calculating it is, is calculating one development right per fifteen acres. So you get one extra unit in, in your project and then you have to, you have to conserve fifteen acres from, on another parcel. So you're preserving land elsewhere. The other way to do it is one development right for twenty-five acres preserved. And we divided this up by saying that if the parcels, yeah, this, it's a little bit complicated, but if the parcel's been messed with or jury rigged, then you have to use this method. You get less, you have to preserve more. And if the parcel hasn't been altered, then you can, you can use this method. It's just a way to, it's a way to prevent gaming the system. Simplest way I can, the way I can put it.
Jeff, have you ever thought about trying to have the TDRs that are the sending properties in an area, a radius of so many feet or miles of the receiving property so that there is some benefit to the neighborhood? You know what I'm saying? Because
Well.
Seen a problem where the, the TDRs save property, but it was so far from the neighborhood and then their density, the neighborhood density increased and nobody was really happy with it.
So you're saying that the TDR would be more attractive if it was proximal to the project?
If it wasn't sort of the same general area, and I don't know how that gets defined. But if you have something that is quite distant, it has some neighborhood impact, I found, but I'm not for sure if that was just an odd case or not.
The requirement that it be proximate is what New York City has required.
Yeah.
Well, we can think about that if, to think about that, the odds are that it, it probably would be. Not necessarily, but it, it might be. So let me think about that.
Jeff, is it possible, sort of along the lines of like last minute questions? Just, I just had a couple. One, can we, can we have in the bylaw that, that large parcel communities can't be gated? I'm serious. The last thing I want is my brother lives down in Parkland where that shooting was and every single community down there has got tall fences and guard posts like Canyon Ranch, and I just don't want to see that in this town.
I think that you could probably add that to your subdivision regulations because those, remember, those are the regulations for new roads. But, so I think you could probably prevent the gating of new roads that way. I'm not sure whether you could pass a general bylaw that would prevent any existing road from being gated. You might be able to.
Look, I'm not suggesting people, you know, you know, trespass. I just think that it, it's, it's just such a tone for the town I hate. If it were that to happen, you know, and certainly it hasn't happened yet. Um, I guess the other question I had was around, around, you know, there does seem to be a change here in terms of, the one density concern I had with this was around the steep slopes, where the way I read the current bylaws, and I'm no expert, is that, you know, you just can't build on anything over fifteen percent grade. And we are basically a bowl in more ways than the Stockbridge Bowl, in the sense that we've got the Oakham Ridge and the, the Money Mountain foothills and Bear Town Mountain and, you know, Rattlesick Mountain and then Old Stockbridge Road, literally the entire town, much of the center of the, the entire town is surrounded by steep slopes. And I'm wondering if there's any, been any analysis of the impact of allowing fifty percent of those steep slopes to be used in the calculations.
Right. And from a conservation standpoint, I was, I was also surprised to see that one half of fifteen percent of slopes of fifteen percent.
I, I, I would look to you folks. I've seen it, I've seen it different ways. Some of these have been written where it's twenty percent and they take them all out. I mean, fifteen percent to a developer is still workable to many of them.
It's just if we're gonna keep an apples, if the, if we're gonna make a bylaw that's not apples to apples, in other words, if it's banned in the current regulations and we're gonna open them up in the new ones, I just think the analysis has to be done of what these applicable laws are and what the amount of space would now be of, you know, you can't build on it now. And I'm not saying you could build on it, but if you're using it in the calculation, I wanna, I wanna know how it impacts the math. That's all. I'm not saying it's a good or bad idea, Jeff. I'm just saying I wanna know how it impacts the math.
The, the math, you say? I may.
Yeah, the math.
The math. Okay. Well, if you were to make this all of the land, then you would, you'd be subtracting more constrained land and you'd end up with less units.
Well, no, I, I understand in theory what it does to the math. I wanna know for the parcels, you know, we've got, you know, we've got a seventy-seven acre parcel on Iceland Road against Bear Town. Uh, we've got, these are just off the top of my head. We've got, we've got so many parcels that are, that are basically built at the foot of a hill. And if we're gonna, I don't know how much of these parcels are the hill and how much are the flat part. But right now you can only develop on the flat part. And if we're gonna change that, I just think that we should kinda know, you know, with, with some kind of analysis of these kind of lots, like what would the impact be on, you know, what, what's buildable?
Right. And some towns, like Williamstown, has added another zoning district for, for, for hillsides.
Well.
And we have the, the Shenic Mountain Act, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, so what these do is, they don't say that you can't build on slopes of greater than fifteen percent. I mean, that's not a, this doesn't become a regulation. All these are is taking, taking away from the overall piece of land, lands that either are unbuildable like wetlands or difficult to build like slopes. And, and you're just trying to get down to a more realistic, buildable area to then divide by your density divisor to arrive at the number, to arrive at the number of units. And if you didn't do that, you could have a hundred acres of, of, of total crap. And I'm, and crap I'm using in, strictly as, as a developer would use the term, probably great resource area. But, you know, eighty and ninety acres of, of unbuildable, terrible, tortuous property. And if you didn't take, if you didn't make these subtractions and you just divided by density divisor, you'd get way too many units.
Yeah, but what happens at Kripalu, for example, where it's all built on a, it's all built on the ridge? What happens if Kripalu decides to, you know, you know, move to Central Mass and sell the property? So right now it's basically one little flat part where they had the old mansion and it's now their, you know, their, their brick property. You know, their, their, their Jesuit, Jesuit, you know, cells or whatever. I'm just wondering, it's just so much land that is on the steep slope. Are we talking about, would you be able to build five units or a hundred units? I have no idea. But I think, I know that under the old subdivision regulations, you can't, you know, you can't, you can't build on most of it.
Yeah. Well, even here, even after you, you take the total parcel area and you subtract these areas from it, and then you divide by your density divisor and you have a number of units, whether it's, whether it's sixteen or twenty-five or whatever you end up doing, you still have to actually be able to build those units. And there's no guarantee that you can. You know, you, you, you face all of the, all of the same problems with, with building housing units, no matter how many you have. Whether it's a small amount or a large amount. But this is just a way to account for difficult properties. And the more difficult a property is, the more difficult it would be normally, conventionally to develop, the more difficult it's gonna be here too, and that's gonna show through in, in less units. It's just a, a kind of a way to simulate reality.
Good.
Jeff, I have a question about, here in Stockbridge, we have, we build about five buildings per year. We get about five permits for new construction. So if you had the development coming, how, what would be the rate of development? You'd have to figure out where all the houses are gonna go in the beginning, but you wouldn't be building sixteen houses all at once, would you be? I mean, who, who would we know who to sell them to? So is there a formula for the rate of building?
Not in here, there isn't. And that would probably be left up to the market.
But the, the lots would all be. But the, the lots would all be determined. So they would be for sale?
Yes, or, or, or the potential of the lots. The lots don't necessarily have to be all created at one time. I mean, there's a project in Wendell now that's a hundred and twenty acres altogether. And, um, they have, um, you know, seventy-five percent of it's preserved, seventy-five or more, and then there are two building envelopes that have been designated. Um, and a certain number of lots can go in each building envelope. Um, but those lots won't be created until there's a market for them or, or, or a need for them, and then they'll go in and do it through the A and R process. One at a time.
And, and, and Julie, I think that was the intention of the developer of the, of the thirty-seven Interlaken. He wasn't going to build all those units all at once. He was going to stage them over a period of, I think quite a number of years. I don't remember any of those details, but it was not going to be built out as planned right from the get-go.
So, so Jeff, then how would a town keep track of it all? I mean, are there, are the, are the lots marked with monument markers? I mean, if you have a project that, um, doesn't play out, plays out over something like five, ten, fifteen years. Um, these boards all, um, you know, change over, people come and go. So how would a town keep track of it all?
Uh, there, there would have to be some type of, of, of system because you would get a, you'd get a permit for a certain number of lots within a, a developable area and, uh, over time, that's how many you get. Uh, so there'd have to be, um, some type of, of tracking of that probably by the planning board or the building inspector.
That to me sounds like a weakness.
Wouldn't there be a map, Jeff, that would show where all the approved lots are?
It, it may be a weakness, but, um, I, I, I don't think it's a good idea to force them to, to lay out all the lots and sell them quickly. I mean, some of these may develop very slowly over time and that could be in the town's interest. Having a, a slower, more relaxed pace of growth rather than many lots coming on, um, at one time.
Yeah, absolutely.
But yes, that, that, that has to be tracked because the permit will give you a limit on how many lots can, uh, can be developed and once that limit is, is reached, that's it.
So, I mean, do you have a map, like in, you know, Wendell or the town that you used in his example, do they have a map that shows the lot, those lots laid out?
They have, that, uh, the, the permit that they're going to get in Wendell is, is going to show the, um, the permanently preserved lane and then that's all going to be, go under a CR. And then two building envelopes. Two separate building envelopes in, um, areas that make a lot of sense for there to be building envelopes. And within those building envelopes, a certain amount of, of, of units can be constructed in the future. And in order to, to build any of them, they have to go in and create a lot at some point. And they'll be, because they had gotten that prior approval, they'll be able to go in and, and get those A and R approvals for the lots and then houses can be built. But, uh, landowners are, are not going to want to, most of them are, are not going to want to create, especially ones that, that are in it for kind of, you know, where the market is not that hot. Uh, will not want to create lots right away because then the tax assessor will start taxing them as building lots. Immediately.
What, after the permit is granted to Wendell, what will be recorded at the rec, as the deed on the property? Will the special permit be, or not the special permit, but will the record at the registry of deeds show what has been approved, just so there's other places to keep track of records?
Wendell, well, Wendell has its own, its own records. Um, I believe that this is a site plan review in Wendell and I believe there's a requirement in there that it be recorded. Um, also the conservation restriction, uh, will be recorded. So, and it's very important that that happened because, um, I mean, that's permanently protected land, so that will be recorded in the deed for that property as well.
We've got another couple of minutes before we have a hard stop at, uh, at six o'clock. I know we, we haven't gotten that deep into this. We're going to have to pick it up at another time. Um, even though I think we've got a lot, we've covered a lot of ground. There's, there's more to cover, obviously.
So, yeah, I, I think the way this works best is, is, um, is to read all of my comments on the side because they try to summarize, you know, what each section does. Anything that's in yellow is, uh, something that needs work or where a, a question has been raised. And read you here and, and probably, uh, specific questions about this text would be the easiest way to go.
Yeah, that, that, that makes sense.
I did going through it, Jeff, and I'll keep going through it. Obviously I was at a, a disadvantage, um, tonight because I never received the first draft, so.
So I, I think it was unrealistic to expect that we'd get through this uh, tonight. But we've made a dent and, uh, we'll, we'll just have to pick it up another time, I think.
There's a lot of progress though.
We have made progress and I think you've clarified a number of things and there've been good questions from everybody. Uh, and so I think it's been a worthwhile two hours, but we are at six o'clock and I promised that we'd stop at six o'clock.
Okay.
So Jeff will be in touch in terms of, uh, or Christine will, in, in terms of a next, uh, uh, get together and, um, and we'll let the public know about that. And so I, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Well, I'd like to say thank you to Jeff for taking the time. Really thank you for your, your expertise.
Thank you, Jeff.
You're, you're, you're very welcome. By, remind you, I'm the only one here getting paid.
Taking care of your horses.
Yeah, so for, for next time, I'm, I'm going to roll out a conservation analysis finding section that would go in your subdivision regulations. So you can see what that's about. And then if you wish, I will do a mock-up on the CISTO. Um, according to this bylaw, not as a, not as a, as proposed, but if it was proposed to be residentially developed, I can do the calculations on that and show you how that came out.
That would be great. And I think, yeah, according to what I've, uh, recorded, we got through section D pretty much. So if we pick this up again, we could start on, um, section E. Not to preclude any questions from stuff we've already covered, but, um, just in the interest of trying to make progress. We can resume this, um, at, at section E, I think, um, next time.
Okay, or if anyone has, if anyone has questions from earlier sections, I'd be happy to try to, try to answer them.
Okay.
Are people available next week? Because I think it's, we need to keep this momentum going and we lose if we spend too much time away from it. So maybe we, and I don't know how to come up with a date next week, but I think, um, it certainly would be helpful. I know Jeff, you said you're available on certain days. So if you could at least give us those dates and we could send it to the planning board and see if they're available on those dates and pick a, a date that works for the most people. And we recognize that not every planning board member or every member of the public can be at every meeting. And that's fine because there is a recording and we appreciate how much time you're already spending on this. But the more, um, leeway we have in setting up, uh, the next meeting, the easier it's going to be.
Yeah.
Tuesday or Wednesday would be available next week.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Um, Bill, I, I vote for not having two consecutive days of, of planning board meetings, if at all possible in the future. And then, um, can you send me that draft number, number one tomorrow, please?
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll look for it. If I can find it, uh, by tomorrow, I will send it tomorrow.
Bill, why don't you send it to everybody?
Yeah, no, that's what I meant. Let me see. Oh, Christine, so you'll follow up and determine, uh, confirm that th- those days are good for Jeff and then you'll let the planning, you'll let Jennifer and the planning board know. And, and, and we'll figure out who's most available, most, uh, on which of those days.
And this timeframe seemed to get a fairly good attendance, but maybe there's a different time, but let's, I'll be in touch, Jeff, with your, uh, Joe, once I have more information.
Okay, good. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Tell motion.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
I'm not going to call the roll. I'm not expert at that. Only Jennifer could do that. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, everybody. Thanks again, Jeff.
Bye.
Bye, Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you.